I've got it up and ready to go.
Number nine.
Nine, okay. I'd like to just find it on my screen and just be prepped for kidding me.
Oh, I should ask.
So that is number Affordable Housing Trust Fund budget. I believe that's what it is.
Oh, yeah, this is.
Staff report number 121. Is that what it was?
It is the one that, yes, 121 that has to do with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Okay, got it, okay. I'd like to just check it up on my screen, ready to go.
All right, there we go.
Oh, that was nice. Those are some tricky cards from the non-smoking people. For us voting on the enthal. It was nice. You guys should get that kind of mail. I had another interesting park walk yesterday with Kathleen.
Well, we'll have to talk later.
We went to Donaldson Park. And 95% of the talk was not city-related.
That's good.
Yeah, it's been really good. We're at Augsburg Park next week. Test, test.
Got it?
It's seven o'clock, but we're not on the air yet.
Is Simon gone for the meeting?
He was planning to be here for the meeting.
He was supposed to be here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:00 PM on September 12th, and I'm calling to order the regular city council meeting of the City of Richfield. If you are able, please stand and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're going to start off with the open forum. If you're listening online and you would like to call in, you can dial 1-415-655-0001. Use webinar access code 26308344127, and the password is 1234, and that's on the screen that you're watching at home also. Is there anybody that's online at the moment?
Mayor Supple, there is not.
All right, we do have two people that are currently here in the room that would like to speak. Just a reminder to please say your name and your address, and you have three minutes to address the council. So we'll start out with Ava McKnight. Thank you. Yes, you can go up there, and we'll make sure the microphone is working.
Hello, my name is Ava McKnight, and I am a Richfield resident, honorable mayor, council members, and city manager. I represent, I'm here on behalf of Outlawns of Richfield in Bloomington. We are a community group having a celebration at Moyer Park in Bloomington on September 16th, 10 to 1. And our hope is that the city council will represent. I know that Mayor Supple has already agreed and is shaking or nodding her head. We'd really enjoy to have having council members as well. And we would like you to just present. I invited you for 10 minutes, I'm given three, and I'm starting to think maybe I should shorten that and leave more for questions from residents, but we'll see how it goes. While some of you may know this group, we are a group of 700 members strong, and those are mainly people from Richfield, majority, and then Bloomington and Minneapolis as well as surrounding areas. The work that we do lowers water use, keeps water clean, replenishes the aquifer, reduces fossil fuels, and our work also contributes to mitigating the extinction that's currently happening. And Outlawns is a community of resiliency, and we hope that you will partner with us as it is stated in the 2326 Richfield Strategic Plan. So, I know that you have had this on your desks, are any of the council members able to attend?
Usually, we don't respond and do back and forth, but people can contact you, I think.
Sounds good.
We sent it out to everyone's emails.
Okay, every city is different. All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Mary Best.
Good evening. My name is Mary Best, and I live at 6727 Elliott Avenue. I've lived in Richfield for most of my life. I've always been very proud of my city and would brag to my family and friends about the small hometown feel existing next to the great big city of Minneapolis. We were doing it right. That began to slowly change about 10 years ago. At that time, my grandkids who live in Richfield were in grade school, so I did some research and found out about Richfield's school system was certainly not what it used to be when I went there. Not only that, it had been failing for some time. My grandkids ended up going to South Minneapolis for school. It was also about that time I started feeling that Richfield was changing in a way I did not like. The new government center that we are sitting in right now was built in 2011. The cost was $23 million. One of the main reasons given for the renovation was the need to update the facility for our emergency call center housed here. Shortly after it was built, Richfield and Edina entered into an agreement, and the call center went to Edina. At that time, many citizens were not comfortable with the cost of the building or the moving of the call center, but it went up anyway, and so did our taxes, and every year since. I also feel that the citizens of Richfield have been losing ground ever since and losing our voices too. On the evening of Night to Unite, I had the opportunity to speak with Ben, one-on-one. We had a conversation about Richfield, of course, and he stated that everything, when he talked to, loved Richfield, were very happy with how things were going. I stated that oftentimes, people are not really, speak up until they are infected. Now, I hear about taxes, lack of parking arguments, or apartments charging exorbitant additional fees for regular parking places, parking and traffic problems in residential areas, and unsightly families, single-family homes with five, six, seven cars parked in the yards and on the streets are definitely getting people's attention. But that is not the whole story. The beginning of this year, several of us came before this city council and presented several reasons why the 2040 plan was not viable or sustainable for Richfield. It was set up for larger cities that were possibly better equipped to absorb large population expansion. Richfield is not that city. In Minneapolis last week, the court found that, quote, "Portions of the city's 2040 plan is an ongoing violation of the Minnesota Environmental Rights Act." The Arctico also stated that the plan would enrich property developments without giving opportunities for homeownership. Minneapolis has been directed to revert back to the 2030 plan. Richfield should do that also without going to court. Let's be a conscientious, forward-thinking city and do what is right for our citizens. I know most of you are connected to human resource fields. Squeezing more people into a small area is not the way to attract new residents or keep old ones, but better by making it clean and safe. You may have had the right intention at the beginning, but you can already see the results are devastating. I request that each of you really study the 2040 plan and see if you really believe it is right for Richfield. It's not too late to change. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that has turned in a card and wishes to speak? Is there anyone else that's online for open forum?
There is not.
All right, then we will move on. So next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of August 2nd, 2023, the city council work session of August 8th, 2023, the city council meeting of August 8th, 2023, the special city council meeting of August 29th, 2023, and the city council work session of August 29th, 2023.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve all five of the minutes from those meetings. Are there any conversations or questions or corrections? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes listed, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have approved the minutes. So for our first presentation for tonight, we would like to say a big thank you to our local legislators, and so we're fortunate to have with us Representative Howard and Senator Wicklund. And so if you'd like to join me up here at the podium, that would be fabulous. So we would like to do a very big thank you from the City of Richfield for all the fine work that you've done. And it's interesting, as you go to meetings around the region, your names come up, and they'll talk about the work that you've done in housing and for human services and all of the things that you've done for our city, and so I really, really appreciate that. Their whole healthcare, trying to open up access for everybody regardless of their immigration status, things like making sure that everybody can get a driver's license so that makes the city safer, opening up things for housing so that we have more opportunities to make sure that all of our residents have housing, and so we want to thank you a great deal for that. If there's anybody from the council that would like to add something, we'll do that, and then we'll give you a chance to speak as well, but thank you so much for all you've done. All right, so who would like to go first? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Yeah, thank you both for being here and for your work for Richfield. I just want to recognize both, we rely on you to do things for Richfield specifically, like supporting things like our ability to ask residents about a sales tax, about bonding requests and that sort of thing. But I just really appreciate that your general policy direction has also been in the interest of Richfield. As the mayor mentioned, the driver's licenses for all. I think the additional funding for affordable housing that Representative Howard really championed, that's so impactful to our residents, so having good policy direction and good representation on the state level is so terrific. And I also just want to say, I really appreciate just seeing you both in the community. You're very engaged here, of course, Representative Howard lives in Richfield, but I see Senator Wicklund a lot as well. You clearly really care about Richfield, and we're very lucky to have you representing us.
Councilmember Whalen?
I would echo everything that's already been said and particularly appreciate the approach that the kind of traditional view of a politician is, like they get elected and then go do their thing as if they're sent as a, I don't know, instead of the people, and that I consistently see you both consistently collaborating with us, but also just with the neighbors in our community, and that I think our government always works better when it is in that constant communication. So I really appreciate all of the outcomes that have been named, as well as that approach of being accountable and a partner with the community.
Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Senator Wicklund, Representative Howard. Really grateful for your leadership. And I could only add to what my colleagues have said that both in terms of your policy advocacy, that's been a huge help to Richfield specifically financially. Our residents should know that both of you have really gone to bat for our city, and because we're a smaller city, it's so critical that we have strong advocates for our small little four-square-mile patch of Minnesota. And so without you, we would not be as, in the situation that we are. Also, things that people don't see because they don't, they're not votes, but when you advocate and you partner with us on things like the 494 transportation project, and we need all the help we can get when dealing with large institutions like the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and you've been there, and that's noticed. And I know I wrote my friend, Senator Howard, here a few weeks ago, but I had an expired EpiPen. It was expired because they are outrageously expensive. They're hundreds of dollars, and it's my own fault. I should not have let it expire. I needed it, and it didn't work. And that was a bad situation for me. And thankfully, we have great healthcare. I was able to get, I'm still here, it's fantastic, but when I went to go purchase a new EpiPen, it was $35. And that was because you and other legislators, Michael Howard, had a vision to say you shouldn't have to be prosperous to be alive in Minnesota. That's a really big deal, so thank you.
Any other?
Yes, I'd like to echo my colleagues' sentiments exactly with being a smaller first-ring suburb. It's really nice that you are so invested in all of us, not just as politicians up on the Hill at Capitol in St. Paul, but actually working alongside with us, trying to get different things done, and you really take interest in the neighborhoods and the city in general.
Thank you, Councilmember Christensen. And I also want to do a huge thank you for all the advocacy you did for Wood Lake Nature Center. So we have $12 million as part of the bonding bill to help pay for replacing the Wood Lake Nature Center building, and so that makes a huge impact for everyone here in Richfield, and it helps our taxpayers. If you would like to say something, Senator Wicklund, would you like to go ahead?
Just thank you for having us here tonight, I really appreciate that, and the opportunity to also say thank you for all the work that went on, that we interacted with you to get all of these things accomplished. It's really important as we go through session. We understand these priorities, and we are able to contact people as needed, and city staff, and the mayor, and council members to get feedback and to make progress and have hearings. Thank you for all of the work to come and visit us in the Senate at hearings. That's really important as well. So I was happy that we were able to accomplish so much this year, especially the priorities that Richfield had, the Wood Lake Nature Center, especially since we've been working on that for a while now, and it was really great to be able to see that project move forward. And I really look forward to seeing all of that progress physically now. And then, just as a community, it was really gratifying to be able to work on areas within Health and Human Services, which I had more responsibility for, and see that we were able to make progress in areas that I think really will impact Richfield in terms of childcare. We were able to fund some family, friend, and neighbor programs, and I'm really excited because a lot of the community-driven programs that are coming out of Richfield and Bloomington are going to be helped by that, and we wouldn't be able to do it without the advocates from Richfield coming forward and talking with legislators. So thank you to all of you, and look forward to seeing things move forward and working on things for next session, so thanks.
Representative Howard?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. It always feels like a bit of a homecoming to be back in the council chambers, and it's a great opportunity to celebrate our partnership. And that's what I just, so much gratitude to you all for the partnership that we have. And I think back at our work session we had before the legislative session began in Wood Lake Nature Center, talking about how can we work together and strategize to make sure that we see that through, and not just that, a host of other priorities. And as Senator Wicklund mentioned, that doesn't happen without you all showing up at the Capitol and for that work together. Not every city council has an entire council and staff that's as invested in what we're doing at the legislature and sees that importance of that partnership, and that is a big reason why we're so successful on Wood Lake Nature Center, on things like historic investments and local government aid, for the first time, providing direct resources, local affordable housing aid. And the genesis of that, I believe, is that we have city councils that know best how to work with their community to make those kinds of investments, and I just can't wait to see the leadership that's going to come out of this council working in partnership with our community to put those resources to work into the future. And just a brief word about the future. We had a lot of big successes, but there's, of course, more work to do. And I think there's so much momentum that we see out of this legislative session on the things that are important to our community, and it should just fuel all of us to keep this partnership going. As we implement a lot of the legislation that was passed this year, let's keep that line of communication open so that we can make sure that these new resources will be felt in the most impactful way for our communities. And I can't wait to get that strategy session going again to think about the ways that we can partner again and take more steps forward. And lastly, I'm glad to see Councilmember Troutman looking healthy. And so, thank you so much for those words, but it's really good to see you up there. So thank you all so, so much, and I look forward to what comes next.
So Management Analyst Swanson, do you have the documents you went to bring?
All right, we need just a moment here to officially sign a couple things. Bear with me, thank you. All right, and I would like to call forward the Chair of the Human Rights Commission, Chairperson Burke, to receive these proclamations, thank you. All right, first, we have the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th pays tribute to Hispanic and Latino Americans, the largest ethnic minority group in the United States of America, for their contributions to the United States of America and to celebrate the culture and history of these groups. And whereas, the origin of Hispanic Heritage Month goes back to 1968, when President Lyndon Johnson authorized Hispanic Heritage Week in order to increase awareness of Hispanics' contribution to the United States. And whereas, President Ronald Reagan expanded Hispanic Heritage Week to Hispanic Heritage Month in 1988. The first day of Hispanic Heritage Month was set at September 15th, which is the Day of Independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month, excuse me, whereas during Hispanic Heritage Month, Mexico celebrates its independence on September 16th, and Chile celebrates its independence on September 18th. Also, Dia de la Raza is celebrated on October 12th. And whereas 19.4% of the population in Richfield is of Hispanic or Latino origin, according to the 2022 estimates by the U.S. Census Bureau. Whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans have sought for and struggled to make the United States of America their home while enduring discrimination and oppression from those who attempt to quash their dreams for better lives for themselves and their families. And whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans have brought with them their determination, hard work, and talents, which have enriched the lives of all peoples in the United States of America. And whereas, the people of Richfield voted into office the first Hispanic female mayor in Minnesota history, Maria Regan Gonzalez, in 2018. And whereas, the City of Richfield, its city council and staff identify celebrating diversity and being equitable as core values, recognizing that our diverse culture is one of our greatest strengths and assets, striving to promote an environment of equity and inclusion. And whereas, the Richfield Human Rights Commission supported this proclamation at its August 10th, 2023, meeting, and recommended the Richfield City Council do the same. And now, therefore, I, Mary Supple, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Richfield, and call on the people of Richfield to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies, and continue to honor the contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans throughout the year, proclaim this 12th day of September, 2023. Thank you, would you like to say something?
No, just that the Richfield Human Rights Commission appreciates this, and we thank you for your efforts and the council's efforts to further these goals. Thank you.
Did anyone on the council wish to say, have anything to add? All right, Councilmember Troutman?
I just wanted to say thank you to my second favorite Puerto Rican attorney in Ward 1 in Richfield for your leadership on the council and for pulling that recognition together, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Chairperson Burke is also going to be receiving our next proclamation, which is for Welcome Week. Whereas, the founders of our nation, many of who were immigrants themselves, upheld a belief that remains at the core of our country today, that all people have fundamental rights and freedoms under the Constitution. And whereas, a diverse society benefits everyone by providing new perspectives, new ideas, new ways of celebrating and creating community, and much more. And whereas, 16.9% of Richfield residents were born outside of the United States. And whereas, Richfield's success depends on making sure all residents feel welcome. And whereas, new residents are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses, and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas, Richfield residents are united in our efforts to build a stronger city regardless of where we are born or what we look like. And whereas, by recognizing the contributions that we all make to look like. And whereas, by recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and a growing economy, we make our community more prosperous and inclusive to all who call it home. And whereas, in celebration of Welcoming Week and in collaboration and partnership with Bloomington, Eden Prairie, Edina, and Savage, we urge residents to come together in the spirit of unity and renew our commitment to build a community where every person has the opportunity to contribute and do their best. Now, therefore, I, Mary Supple, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 8th through September 17th, 2023, as Welcoming Week in the city of Richfield, and call on the people of Richfield to observe this week with renewed commitment to build a stronger community. Proclaim this 12th day of September 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right. Did anyone else have anything they wanted to add? Commissioner Wayland? Or I mean, Councilmember Wayland? I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that I, every time we do proclamations like this, I always, it's a reminder to ask myself, are we acting on what we're saying? And so I find it encouraging and appropriate. Obviously, we have, can always improve and do more, but that we are celebrating this after just talking with our legislators about the important policies and budgets that were passed at the state level, and before we discuss our city budget later tonight that I believe is continuing to make important investments in providing quality service to all our residents and making sure that that's done in an equitable way, and moving toward even addressing, addressing the long problematic racial disparities that are not unique to Richfield, but that we must take responsibility for too. And so, just encourage anyone listening, certainly our human rights commissioners, to continue holding us accountable to real, real action on this as we continue to make proclamations.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Troutman?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. I just, there's this one, just brief thing I wanted to acknowledge because, you know, the city, you know, you mentioned nearly 20% Latino people now. And when I grew up in Richfield, that was absolutely not what our city looked like. And so I just want to recognize that our cities changed, but we, we sat under the, the leadership not only of a Latina mayor, but a majority Latino council. And sometimes, and people have expressed their unease to me, like, what's, what's happening, what's changing in our community? It was great. We had a great mayor. We had a great council. When we look at our businesses, we look at the food. It's amazing. It's good. And not just food. We have business owners that, we have clothing stores and law firms and other, other, other businesses that reflect our community. And I just want to say, as a multi-generational Richfield member, I'm just really grateful to be a part of our city that represents all our heritage, but particularly our Latino heritage. So, that's, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Second that also, yes.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
I would move the approval of the agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion or changes? All right. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We've approved the agenda. Next, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider the approval of a request for the temporary expansion of the licensed premises for Thompson's Fireside Pizza, Inc., doing business as Fireside Foundry, located at 6736 Penn Avenue South, to allow for the outside service of beer and malt beverages in the parking lot on Sunday, September 17, 2023, in conjunction with Richfield's Open Streets at Penn Fest event. Item B, consider the approval of an agreement with the city of Bloomington for the provision of food, pools, lodging, therapeutic massage, and body art establishment inspection services for the city of Richfield for 2024. Item C, consider adoption of a resolution of support for Richfield's application for federal funding for a quarter planning study of 76th and 77th Street via the U.S. Department of Transportation Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Grant Program. Item D, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing acceptance of the Office of Traffic Safety funds for an extension of an original four-year grant to fully fund an officer dedicated for DWI enforcement in Richfield. Item E, consider approval of the mutual waiver of notice relating to termination of license agreements and release of license agreements which permitted Best Buy to use a parcel of public right-of-way as an additional parking area for their office headquarters until such time as the Minnesota Department of Transportation required use of the property for the construction of I-494 improvements. Item F, consider the acceptance of quotations from Midwest Playscapes for $148,830 for the replacement of play equipment at Donaldson Park, and $76,170 for the replacement of play equipment at Fairwood Park, and authorize the Recreation Services Director to proceed with the project. Item G, consider authorizing the city manager and mayor to enter into a temporary easement and access agreement with Best Buy Corporation for construction of a sanitary sewer crossing, and authorize the city attorney to approve changes to the agreement that are in the best interest of the city prior to final execution. Item H, consider a resolution approving a contract with reach for resources to provide services and activities that aid in the recovery of Richfield community members negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Item I, consider the acceptance of the Taft Park, Nakamas, Minnesota River Regional Trail Bike Park Cooperative Agreement with, between the city of Richfield and Three Rivers Park District. Item J, consider the first reading of the proposed ordinance modifying the electric and gas franchise fees, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for October 10, 2023, for both gas and electric franchise ordinances. Item K, consider a public hearing related to the proposed resolution modifying the streetlight user fees for October 10, 2023. Item L, consider adoption of a resolution designating the city's contribution toward health, dental, term life, and disability insurance premiums for 2024 for the general services and management employee groups. And finally, item M, consider the approval for the first reading of an ordinance amendment to the Richfield City Code, Appendix D, the fee schedule, related to building, planning, and zoning fees, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for September 26, 2023. Almost had to go through the whole alphabet this, tonight. I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wayland?
Just a quick note of excitement about, both for myself, and I know from the Recreation or the Community Services Commission, for both the playground replacements and the bike park that will be ready soon. And just to thank you again to staff for the ways that they work on a limited capital budget for parks and recreation, that the partnership with the Three Rivers Park District means that we can not only maintain what we have, but add a, an exciting new thing that I'm really looking forward to. So, thank you to everyone who's had a role in that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I did want to do a shout out about the grant we're going to be proposing from, and working in partnership with the federal government. We were highlighting the ways we worked with our state legislators, and we also want to work with our federal-level legislators. All right. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of approving the consent calendar items, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We have completed that. Next, we're going to move on to a public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. Minnesota Statute Sections 116-J, 993 through 995, the Business Subsidy Act, regulates business subsidies and requires state and local units of government to adopt criteria for awarding business subsidies after conducting a public hearing. The Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the city council adopted a business subsidy policy in 1999, and adopted a modified business subsidy policy in 2002. The Economic Development Authority was established in 2017 to promote and provide incentives for economic development, and is subject to the business subsidy policy adopted by the HRA and council in 2002. Much of the financial assistance provided by the HRA and EDA does not qualify as a business subsidy as defined by the Business Subsidy Act, such as assistance for housing development or assistance of $150,000 or less. The state legislature amended the Business Subsidy Act after the existing business subsidy policy was adopted by the HRA and council. The Business Subsidy Act states that, first, business subsidies must meet a public purpose, which may include job creation or retention, or other goals such as increasing the tax base, removal of blight, or catalyzing future redevelopment. Two, some subsidies are not considered a business subsidy, including housing, business subsidies of $150,000 or less, contamination cleanup, and certain redevelopment projects. Three, a business subsidy recipient must enter into a business subsidy agreement with the grantor. The business subsidy agreement must include job and wage goals and the recipient's obligation if the goals are not met. After a public hearing, if the creation or retention of jobs is determined not to be a goal, the wage and job goals might, may be set to zero. Public hearings must be conducted for business subsidies that exceed $150,000. Business subsidies of $25,000 or more, and business loans of $75,000 or more, must meet the adopted business subsidy criteria. The business subsidy recipient and the city are required to submit annual reports to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development regarding the business subsidy. Staff worked with legal counsel to draft the amended and restated business subsidy policy, which provides more clarity and is updated to reflect the amended Business Subsidy Act. The substantive changes that were made as part of the amended and restated business subsidy policy include, number one, the wage floor requirements were increased from 110% of the federal minimum wage to 125% of the state minimum wage. Number two, the goals outside of job creation and retention were revised to include a project that results in redevelopment along priority commercial corridors or in the downtown area to help meet the outcomes of the 2023 to 2026 Richfield Strategic Plan. And number three, a clause was added stating that all references to the Business Subsidy Act include any amendments made after the amended and restated business subsidy policy is adopted. The city council will hold the public hearing now on behalf of the city HRA and EDA. Staff will provide an update on public hearing to the HRA, EDA at their meetings on September 18th, prior to their consideration of resolutions approving the amended and restated business subsidy policy. Does staff have anything to add prior to opening the public hearing? Okay. So this is a public hearing. I will maybe turn it over to the mayor, since she knows the call-in instructions. But if anybody would like to speak in person, they can approach the podium now.
So, the city clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the same call-in procedure as open forum, correct? So, the number that you can call is dial 1-415-655-0001. Use webinar access code 2630-8344127, and password 1234. So, we'll hold for a minute or two here to see if anyone wants to call in. Is there anyone here in person at the meeting that wishes to speak at the public hearing? All right. Ruine, if you want to come up and state your name and address, and go ahead. And it's the same rules as open forum. You have three minutes.
Ruine Onesi-Rosa, 2421 West 65th Street. I'm a little bit confused about TIF, subsidies, benefits. Correct me if I have this wrong, but if I decide that I want to put up a big, big building, and I'm, and I say, okay, I'm going to have two units for people in wheelchairs, and four units for people who are poor, then I'm going to get a whole lot of money from the city by way of tax benefits that I don't pay. I, for 25 years, I don't pay taxes, but I collect the taxes from the renters. Is that what happens? Am I wrong about that? Isn't that a subsidy?
When you're finished with your comments, we can have someone go over the TIF, what, what it means.
It seems, I, I mean, I, I'm, every time I listen to the HRA and the people talking about it, it's so couched in accounting genre terms. But I, I don't understand why developers get these kind of benefits. And you don't put them in your bottom line anywhere when it comes to how much, because if those people are not paying taxes, we, other residents, are paying the taxes they don't pay. Isn't that right? And how do you figure that in with your calculations and your budgets? Tell me if I've got this wrong.
All right. Thank you. At the conclusion of the public hearing, we'll have staff respond and talk about TIF. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak or address the public hearing? Okay, we've given a couple of minutes for call-ins. Did anyone call in?
No one did.
All right. So at this point, I believe you can close the motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about closing the public hearing? All right. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, the public hearing is closed. If staff could do a brief overview of what TIF is and how it works, I believe Community Development Director Palman is stepping forward to do that.
And Mayor, if I could ask, if they could first clarify if the policy in question relates to TIF, what we're considering tonight, I would appreciate that context.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, thank you. The policy tonight is just a general business subsidy policy. There are times when, if the city would grant tax increment to a development, it could be considered a business subsidy, but most often, it is not. It does not fall within the parameters of the, the business subsidy statute. TIF in general is not an opportunity for a developer not to pay their taxes. What it is, is a tool that the HRA can use to help a development that would not happen if that funding was not available. So, an analysis is done by, by a financial firm that the city contracts with to see if a development could go forward without this additional assistance. Tax increment means that the development is paying its full taxes. The new taxes that have been generated by that development that wouldn't have been there without that development can be refunded to the development to pay for certain costs. Things like new infrastructure costs. You often think of these things as underground costs, parking structures, infrastructure. Often, we use TIF to meet our affordability goals. So, they help developers to offer a certain percentage of units at a cost that is more affordable to residents of our community. Are there additional questions?
Are there any additional questions from council members, for staff?
Maybe for staff, but not regarding TIF. I don't know if we need to make the motion and then have discussion.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and then move on to the motion, and then we'll have a discussion about the substantive matter.
Yep. I'll move that we adopt a resolution approving the amended and restated business subsidy policy.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, and I'm assuming that Councilmember Troutman would like to speak to it.
Oh, sure. Thank you. I just had a, a question about some of the changes. I just remembered during the pandemic, one of the challenges we had for subsidy I just remember during the pandemic, one of the challenges we had for subsidies for businesses here in the city were a lot of, we call them mom and pop businesses, but owner operated businesses, a lot of times they won't have W-2 income. And that created a barrier for some of the businesses we would want to have supported the most. We found our structures hard to match with the lived experiences of owner operating businesses. So I was wondering if this ordinance contemplated that and would there be opportunity for owner operated businesses? Because they wouldn't meet the 100% or 125% of minimum wage necessarily, but I'd hate to see them left out if there was a way to include them.
Thank you for the question, mayor and council member. So this policy is specific to business subsidies that are $150,000 or more. So typically, some of the, like the ARPA programs that we had to help small businesses during COVID were much smaller dollar amounts than this. There is a provision in state statute where if, let's say we were doing a business subsidy that met the criteria, we could hold a public hearing. If the project was meeting other goals outside of the wages and number of jobs, those could be set to zero.
No, well, I appreciate that, and I was just asking for a clarification. The business subsidies of $25,000 or more, or loans of $75,000 must meet the adopted business criteria. So would it also apply to $25,000? Or maybe I'm not understanding that?
Yeah, thank you for the question, and you're not the only one. When I sat down with this, it seemed a little counterintuitive as well. What it means is that-
It can't be counter my intuition if I don't have any intuition.
So there's a threshold of $150,000 or more. There was an addition, so there's been amendments to the Business Subsidy Act over time, and one of the amendments has been made is for something that is $25,000 or more or a loan that's $75,000 or more. It needs to meet the criteria, but it doesn't have the stringent reporting requirements to deed that a subsidy over 150 requires.
No, well, I appreciate that, and just to clarify, if there were businesses that maybe fell into that $25,000 category and they weren't a perfect fit employment-wise, but they were otherwise eligible, they could come before the council? Is that-
Correct, through a public hearing. Yep, you could choose to set those goals at zero.
Wonderful.
Yep.
As a policy or just on a case-by-case basis?
That would be on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions? Councilmember Whalen?
I'm maybe more confused than before that question. I was originally going to ask specifically about those wage floor requirements and when they apply and if that is, like who they apply to. I'm happy to see, I think this is, in real current numbers, a change from roughly $8 per hour wage to closer to, I guess I don't know where the state minimum is right now. I know it's on its way up. But that's almost doubling the wage floor requirements, and I generally support higher wages, and I'm just curious who, so I think I'm happy about this, but who and when does it apply to?
So that would apply to a business subsidy of $150,000, well, or more. To comment on the change in the minimum wage, in the past, it was tied to the federal minimum wage, which is less than the state of Minnesota. And so we look to change it to be tied to Minnesota's. And to answer your question, the federal, right now, the federal minimum wage is 725. In Minnesota, for small employers, it's 863. For large employers, it's 1059. So if you look at 125% of that, it would be a range of $10.79 to $13.24 for Richfield.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other comments or questions? All right, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, mayor. That brings up another good point, Councilmember Whalen raises. On the other hand, when there are businesses that either engage, particularly in the trades, you know, it can be a practice to say, well, we're going to hire independent contractors or we're going to, you know, demand that our laborers create their own LLC. Would this law capture that and create an expectation or floor for those wage earners? Or do they have to be W-2 employees, contractors, and then independent contractors that have their own entity?
Thank you for the question. It's my understanding would be W-2 employees.
Would it be possible, and I just asked my colleagues if they would consider expanding this at least to independent contractors? And we could maybe use language like workers to identify people that are working as opposed to, frankly, the most privileged category of workers that we would have?
So this was crafted to match what state statute requires. However, if we are looking at doing a business subsidy, we would enter into a business subsidy agreement between the EDA, HRA, city, whoever the grantor is, and the business. That requires a public hearing. We would work with our attorney to draft that agreement. We could, at that point, for a specific project, we could look at additional language.
Would it prevent the efficacy for this ordinance if we expanded the rights to workers as well, even just as a matter of policy? I understand that that's where the state's left the floor.
I don't know if the city attorney would want to opine.
Mayor and Councilmember Troutman, I will fully admit that I am not the attorney who worked on this policy. It's not an ordinance. It's a policy, correct? My colleague Julie Eddington is the bond lawyer for the city, so she worked on this. I don't know if the statute would allow for that. I know that this, as staff has already stated, this was, the amendments were done so that it would be in compliance with the new law. And so I think, you know, before we suggested amendments to this document, we would want to make sure that we're still remaining in compliance. And without doing some checking on that, I can't answer that question right off the top of my head, so.
No, that's fair, and I don't like putting anybody, especially lawyers, on the spot. But I would, I'd just be curious if there was anything that was time sensitive about this. If not, I'd be interested in, I'd move that we table it and give staff the opportunity to look at that.
As far as time sensitivity, all three bodies, the council, the EDA, and the HRA are subject to the terms of the existing business subsidy policy right now. So we don't have a gap of not having a policy in place.
So it's been moved to table this until, do you have a time certain, like the next meeting, or?
A city attorney teaching, would the next meeting be enough time?
Mayor and council, yes, if that's the direction of the council, I think we can get an answer back before the next meeting.
I don't know. I don't know what the council thinks, but I would move that we table it and give staff the opportunity to see if we couldn't expand the protections to all workers and not just W-2 workers.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. I believe, and attorney teaching can correct me, we can't discuss a motion to table. Is that correct?
I believe that's right, non-debatable.
It's not debatable. So at this point, all in favor of tabling it, please say aye.
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 All opposed to tabling it, and I'll say aye to that.
Or no, whatever.
No, okay. All right, so I think we need to do a roll call because I'm not sure how everybody's voting on this. So city clerk Leslie, can you call the roll on this motion to table?
Councilmember Troutman? Aye. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
No.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
Mayor Supple?
No. All right, so we have tabled this until the next meeting. And that, I think that would be, so that also will carry over into the EDA and the HRA. It'll move it back a month, and we're under the previous, whatever the current policy is at this point. All right, thank you very much. So next, we'll move on to consider the proposed budget. So I'll turn it over to Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, mayor. This item is to consider the 2023 revised and 2024 proposed budget resolutions, adopting the 2024 preliminary property tax levy, setting the truth and taxation hearing date, authorizing budget revisions, authorizing revision of 2023 department budgets, and setting city fees for 2024. On August 29th of this year, special city council meeting was held to present and discuss the, these budgets and preliminary property tax levy. Staff presented to the city council a preliminary gross tax levy of $28.3 million, which includes a levy for general fund operations of $22.4 million, a debt service levy of $4.1 million, an equipment and technology levy of $1.2 million, and an economic development agency levy of $599,000. Accordingly, the 2024 preliminary gross levy represents a 5.89% increase from the 2023 gross levy. Once the preliminary levy is approved, it may be further reduced at a later city council meeting, but it legally cannot be increased over the preliminary approved amount. In addition, the city must certify its proposed property tax levy for payable year 2024 to the county auditor and set a date for its truth and taxation public meeting on or before September 30th of 2023. The truth and taxation public meeting must be held between November 25th and December 28th, 2023, and must occur at 6:00 PM or later. The city's truth and taxation public meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. At the August 29th special meeting, staff also presented the proposed city fees for 2024 and is asking council to adopt a resolution setting those fees for 2024. A separate ordinance related to building permits, zoning, and other land use permits fees established by Appendix D of the city code are included in a separate report as they're set by ordinance, not resolution. At this point, I'll hand it over to City Manager Rodriguez for staff to present more.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen. I would encourage all residents that are, it's on, can you not hear me? Sorry, we're having trouble with this microphone. Is that better?
Yeah.
I would encourage residents that are interested in learning more about the budget. The budgets are, both our capital and operating budgets are posted online, but the presentations at the work sessions of August 2nd and August 29th, I think, give really good information, and I would encourage residents, and I'm sure there's lots of them, that are really interested in learning more about the budget to go online. I, this process is a long one. We begin in April or April and May each year to put together the budget. I confess, I, each year, each that we put it together, I begin with a bit of worry. It's tough. We are trying really hard to keep those levy increases low and also give our staff the tools they need to meet increasing service demands and to invest in our infrastructure. I am pleased this year. It's been a tough year because of those service demands and because of lingering effects of increased inflation and a tight labor market, but we were able to keep it at 5.89%. And to put that into perspective, we've done an informal survey of about eight cities. There are comp cities and our neighbors, and the range of those cities was 6.62% to 11.99%. I then shift into marveling at the good work that we're doing when I get to meet with the department directors and their teams and seeing that progress that we're making on the strategic plan initiatives and that the work is really based in our values. And then I finally, I end this process with a lot of gratitude, and I do want to thank the council. I know that you do a really careful review and are very thoughtful with your questions and your suggestions, and I do think we have a better document because of it. And finally, the biggest thank you is for our fearless budget leader, Kamud Verma, our finance director. She puts in long hours and is continually improving the process and our financial condition. So with that, I will turn it over to Director Verma.
Thank you, Katie, and I want to start with thanking the mayor and the council and city manager for their leadership and guidance in balancing the city budget. I also want to thank all the directors and their team members who have engaged in the budgeting process this year. As city manager said, there are no changes to the budget since August 29th presentation. The most recent copy of the budget book is available on the Richfield website, and staff is here to follow up with any question the council may have on this budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you, staff. I am sure we'll have some comments and potential questions, but I would start the conversation by making a motion to adopt the attached resolutions establishing the 2024 preliminary property tax levy and proposed date for the truth and taxation hearing, authorizing budget revisions, authorizing revision of 2023 department budgets, and city fees for 2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Now we're open for comments or discussion? Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I just wanted to share, I'm liaison to the Transportation Commission, and the budget was my main update at the last meeting for them. And I just, you know, I first said five, I think I said five and a half percent, 5.89% increase. And, you know, at first, people were like, oh, that's kind of a lot. And I'm like, well, but staff need a 3% cost of living increase, so that's just treading water. If nobody got a promotion, if nothing the city buys raises money. So I think when you put it in perspective, that that's really a bare minimum and that workers in any industry should be able to expect. We are doing a really good job keeping our belts tied and being very responsible with public dollars. So thank you, staff, for presenting this, and yeah, I support this.
Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, mayor. I always, when we talk budget, try and figure out how we can tell the story more of what these numbers accomplish and provide for our community. One of the things I am most excited about for in this year's budget is that we are finally investing, creating a budget for our sustainability and climate action work. We have not had, we've had a staff person, but with, and a commission, but no funding to pursue the priorities and projects there. And so, given that, the place of that work in our strategic plan, I'm excited to see that us finally putting our money where our priorities are. And that's true along a bunch of other fronts that are not quite as new but are just as important and ongoing, such as our equity work, our reinvesting in infrastructure work, and particularly, given the way the labor market is and that a lot of the limitations we faced in the last few years are from a lack of staff or too much transition, to be with our, the study on our benefits and everything we offer staff to be able to make sure that we are offering jobs that people are excited to have and can live on, and that we get the best staff that we can and need to be able to pursue all of our priorities. So I think the numbers are important and really appreciate the story of what we are investing in as a city.
All right, other comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to say-
I just wanted to say briefly, and I, I know Councilmember Hayford O'Leary mentioned this, but last year we had inflation in, in our country of over 9% and we had a budget increase of less than that. And it's yet to be seen where our inflation rate will land this year. But when we see an, an increase, I just want to recognize to staff too, I know you've made and continue to make really tough choices and that a, a budget increase that roughly tracks with inflation when sometimes we have hard costs and soft costs that really are out ahead of inflation and those costs have gone up significantly, that this is not, this is not funding all of our priorities. This is the fruit of you making tough decisions. And so I, I do support and plan to support our budget, but just want to recognize our staff and say thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues because as far as personal budgets go, in our personal homes and our businesses, it's always tough to make those adjustments. But when you're dealing in the city like we are here, it's a small community. But yet, thinking through with the directors and the hard work that they put into really evaluating what the needs of the citizens, of the residents of the city is, is, is always a refreshing thing to find that they do take into the consideration of all the residents and the services that they provide.
Thank you. And I wanted to thank everyone that's been involved in the budget process. One thing that I was really impressed with is the long-term lens and long-term planning that was taken. Because sometimes if you look in the long term, a small investment now pays off with a big savings later. And we've been trying to be good stewards of both sustainability, of infrastructure, both recreation and the more utilitarian things like the sewers and the water mains. And so we need to keep making those investments. And I, I think looking at sustainability is important. So like when we looked at our energy usage and how we can save in our buildings and be more efficient. But also, we need to look, it was important when we looked long-term as far as like succession planning and staffing so that we can make sure that we have a stable workforce that's able to be here and do the work and plan for technology changes and all of that long-term. So thank you for thinking more than just one year ahead, for thinking 10, 15, 20 years ahead. Appreciate that. Are there any other comments?
Councilmember Wayland?
I've realized, I was going to ask staff for, I, I think it's great that we have the full multi-hour recording and the full budget document. For folks who are curious, but maybe don't have that much time to spend on it, are the slides from that work session also online? Awesome, I'm seeing.
Yes, that, that's what I was suggesting. I think the presentation, the slide deck is helpful if you just want to get a quicker overview.
Sure, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right. Then at the moment, we have the motion before us to adopt the attached resolutions establishing the 2024 preliminary property tax levy and proposed date for the truth in taxation hearing, authorizing budget revisions, authorizing revision of the 2023 department budgets, and the city fees for 2024. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have passed the recommended action. Next, we'll move on to item number nine, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to consider a resolution approving the 2023 revised and 2024 budget for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. On May 26th, 2020, the city established an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support the preservation and creation of affordable housing in the city. Through its trust fund, the city can support the rehabilitation and preservation of existing affordable housing, promote the development of additional affordable housing, and assist individuals with rental and down payment assistance. The city's Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the HRA, administers the trust fund on behalf of the city. The 2023 revised budget provides funding for the following affordable housing programs: $220,000 for down payment assistance through the HRA's First Time Home Buyer Program, which serves households earning up to 80% of the area median income, the AMI, and $20,000 for the New Home Program, which provides affordable homeownership opportunities for households earning up to 80% of the AMI. The 2024 proposed budget for the trust fund includes funding for the following affordable housing programs: $180,000 for First, for the First Time Home Buyer Program, $200,000 for the New Home Program, and $700,000 for development grants to affordable housing projects. Funding for the trust fund in the 2023 revised and 2024 budget is provided by Community Development Block Grant Funds proceeds from the sale of the HRA property and pooled tax increment. Does the staff have anything additional to add?
Members of the council, no, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
All right, then if you want to go ahead and make the motion?
Okay, we make a motion that to adopt a resolution approving the 2023 revised budget and 2024 budget for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments? Councilmember Wayland?
I was just going to say I'm excited to see, and I know this has made possible, again topical to our conversation with our legislators, but to some of the funding flexibility that we were able to work on with our state legislators. I wanted to ask either staff or the, the two council members who are on the HRA. I'm just curious, I saw in the notes that $700,000 for development grants to affordable housing projects. I'm both excited to see that because I've been asking for a long time if there's any source where we can just directly help meet the funding gaps that stop a lot of these affordable projects. I saw there was a note about a plan for $200,000 of that. Is that, is the rest kind of, we'll see what comes up? Is there already a plan for it? I was just curious if that had been designated already.
So $200,000 has been designated for the Richfield Flats project at 7,700 Pillsbury, and then $500,000 was committed to Astro Commons located at 6613 Portland.
Okay, thank you.
And now, as a follow-up question, are both of those based on whether or not they get the tax credits from the state?
That is correct. They, they need significantly more money than that. What we're providing is just gap financing. And they both have applications in. Unfortunately, I just read an email from Beacon that they are not receiving funding this year. So what typically happens with these projects is that they have to go back in repeatedly. Apparently, there were 97 applications for low-income housing tax credits this year, so.
So despite the extra funding from the state, there's, the demand is.
The demand is that great, right? So, but you know, we, we keep trying. It usually takes multiple years to be successful.
All right, Councilmember Troutman?
Yeah, thank you. I just noticed we, we lowered the First Time Home Buyers Program by $40,000. Did I read that right? That the revised budget for 2023 was $220,000 and then 2024 was $180,000? And of course, I'm sad to see that. And am I reading that right? And why is?
You are. However, we are probably going to supplement with Community Development Block Grant Funds in the future. And then we also have this new local, what do they call it? LHA, Local Affordable Housing Aid that we'll be receiving. And we would anticipate that we'll be plugging some of that money into that. So that program is going strong. We've had a whole bunch of recent applications. And so we certainly want to fund as many as we can. We also, there's some more money from the state for down payment assistance money. And the county is starting a new program. So we also want to be a little bit cautious and see, you know, what other sources there might be to direct folks to. So it's not that we have a lesser commitment to it. It's just we're rethinking how we fund it each time. And the sales proceeds that have been funding it are going to run out, so. Yeah.
No, thank, thank you very much. I just wanted, I really appreciate you saying that because it's, it's often transformational, not just for that person, but for everybody that relies on that, that one, that one home. And it's a really powerful tool to, to build wealth, especially for first-time buyers in our community. And just saying what everybody else knows that as it becomes harder and harder, as we become less and less affordable, that program I know really has to stretch to be effective. So thank you. I'm glad to know that, that it remains a commitment.
Yep, you are right. And the other goal is, of course, to reach folks who have been traditionally prevented from being part of the homeownership market. And our, our stats are 77% have been, of the loans have been given to BIPOC households.
Excellent.
And then I think an additional two to households with a, a member with a disability. So we've been super successful at reaching our target populations.
Thanks, thanks for that report.
All right, are there other comments or questions? Councilmember Wayland?
This is only a tangential related question, but as you mentioned, the, those LHA funds, is that something, would that also come before council? Or would that be fully through the HRA once a plan is made for that?
So the money will come to the city. It's a city allocation. And presumably, you will give it to the, the HRA to fund, to spend on their programs. I just went to a session a week ago to learn more about it. So things are just still in their infancy. And we would expect payment, I believe it's next July, we'll get our first payment beginning October 1st. They'll start, you'll start to pay a tax that they'll start to collect towards it. So we're, our estimate at this point is we'll get $453,000 a year. And I don't know if we'll get slightly more the first year since it's October, or if we'll get slightly less, but so more to come. I think we find out in May or June what the exact amounts will be. So it'll be reflected in next year's budget more accurately.
Okay. This will surprise no one. But as someone who cares about housing and is not on the HRA, would love to have this kind of a moment with that funding as well to weigh in on how we're, how we're using that.
As a follow-up to that, I would like to commend the forethought that was put into these programs so that when this funding is coming from the state, we have a thoughtful way to use it and programs that have been proven that are working so that we have like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we have the First Time Home Buyers, all of those things. So we have a thoughtful way to steward and use those funds that are coming to us from the state. Because I would hate to be in the position where suddenly there's money there, but we don't have any idea. This way, we've thought it through and planned it, and it'll be used well. And so I appreciate that. If you're listening to this at home and you want to find out more about the Richfield Affordable Housing Trust Fund, if you go to the council packet on the website, you can skip ahead to page 198 and the annual report is attached. So that's page 198. And it's got a thorough explanation of how the Affordable Housing Trust Fund works and what the funds are used for. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, then the question is before us. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, we have approved the recommended emotion, recommended motion, excuse me, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the HRA commission appointment. And I'm going to take this one. So we are here to consider approval of the mayor's appointment of a Housing and Redevelopment Authority Commissioner. On December 13th, 2011, the city council established by resolution that the public's interest is best served by having a composition of two appointed council members and three mayor-appointed citizens who serve on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, HRA. The appointed commissioners also serve on the Economic Development Authority, the EDA. John Young is seeking appointment to the HRA as a mayor-appointed citizen. He would be filling an open position as a commissioner who has recently, as a, as a commissioner, has recently resigned. The HRA recently reviewed and amended their bylaws to stagger the terms of citizen members. In order to align with the amended bylaws, the expiration dates of some commissioners' current terms have been adjusted. The adjusted terms will be varying lengths, not to exceed the statutory limit of five years. Is there anything that staff would like to add? All right, then I would move to approve the mayor's appointment of John Young as a Housing and Redevelopment Authority Commissioner for a five-year term expiring February 28th, 2028.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any comment? Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to highlight it. I know we've adjusted the process for HRA appointments some in the last couple of years. It feels a little strange to be, and I had spoken with the mayor about this, to be voting on the final approval when I, I was not in an interview. I did not meet John. I, the mayor was kind enough to share the application. But so I, to John, I, I hope to meet you. I would love to talk more, better understand your goals. The other thing that I, I discussed with the mayor already and is, I think, just a flag going forward, I know that we, we can't choose who applies. And I, I think, I, but I, at the same time, I'm just conscious of the person who stepped down from the HRA was someone who is a current renter in Richfield, has experienced, has lived experience in subsidized housing. It just really, and, and we are appointing yet another person like the last appointment, who is, whose expertise and focus is more business-oriented. And I think it is, it is true. I mean, the EDA is just younger than the HRA. The economic programs we have are newer. And so it's historically true, we have not focused as much on that. But I am concerned that this now will give us an HRA where I, it just, there is, is less lived experience in the types of affordable housing that we are trying to create programs for, make decisions about, and hope that going forward, we can sort of bring, bring back in either direct lived experience or at least an, an interest in and focus on the housing side of this joint position.
Are there any other comments or questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Just wanted to say in response to Councilmember Wayland, I also don't know anything about the applicant because it was not in the, the group that interviewed candidates. But I do want to say in terms of the process compared to our last appointment, staff and the mayor did make changes to the process, and I appreciate that. We, I think initially had one, only one candidate. It was reopened, so we would always have multiple candidates under consideration, which was not the case in the last appointment. So I do appreciate that that process has been made more deliberate. And unfortunately, like, like you said, Councilmember Wayland, it is tough when you, yeah, we did have time. I recruited several people to apply and I'm like following up with them. And it's just, you know, it doesn't work in their lives. I agree with your comments, but I, I trust in the mayor's appointment of this, of this guy.
All right, any other comments or questions? And I want to thank both of the applicants that applied for this and say welcome to Mr. Young, to the HRA and the EDA. All right, if there's no further comment, all in favor of approving the appointment of John Young as the HRA Commissioner for a five-year term expiring February 28th, 2028, please say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, we have made the appointment. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the city manager's report. City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
All right, thank you. So then we'll move on to claims and payroll. And please note, we have two sets of claims and payroll. So is there a motion to approve both of them?
I would move to approve both. I would move to approve both.